Good evening, everyone. It is May 12th, 2025 at 5:34 PM. This is the meeting of the Communication and Policy Committee of the Concord School Board. My name is Karen Mika, I'm the chair. With me tonight is Liz Boucher and Pam Walsh, sitting in for Jim Richards. Barb Higgins will be here shortly. Also with us from the district is Catherine Murphy and Karen Fisher Anderson. Tonight, we have two items on the agenda. Without objection, we will go in order. Tonight, we are looking at Policy 415, related to Title IX Sexual Harassment Reporting and Grievance Process, and Policy 304 regarding crowdfunding, which is new. The committee will remember that we have previously reviewed Policy 415 at length per the changes to Title IX that came through during the Biden administration. As of January 2025, those new changes to the federal policy have been retracted, and we are now back at the 2020 version, which we will now see modifications as recommended by the school board and the New Hampshire School Board Association, just to make sure that our policy is in line with what is currently enacted. Does anybody have any questions or comments before I turn it over to Karen? Excellent. Karen, do you want to go ahead and kick us off?
Sure. Thanks, everybody. I'm sorry we have to do this again after spending a long time on the 2020 revision. I did bring for anyone's reading pleasure, if you care, the differences between the 2020 and the 2024 regulations between the two administrations. If you care to read them, I can make you a copy, or you all can have them.
Very sweet, some bedtime reading for us later.
Yes, so I know that's very exciting, but sometimes I'm asked, what's the difference?
We actually will take a copy.
Yeah, okay, okay, great. I thought you might like it. So, so what I have done in this particular draft is, and I'm sorry for all the different colors, but I just like, since we've been over the substance of it, what I would just like to do is go through it. The red changes are, is the language that is inserted from the go-by from the New Hampshire School Board Association. If there, the black language is what is in there from our 2020 original version, okay? If that was changed for any reason from what is being recommended by the school board, then I inserted red language. Put that in there so you all could see the total changes that are being made. Yellow highlights for sections and a couple of words are my, just little scribbles saying, I think we should go this way. And there's even a light green in there that I apologize for, because I was headed for yellow, but somehow I got green instead. So, just really.
Can we ignore the green?
Please.
Yeah, sorry, guys. I saw it too when I doubled.
So, just ignore that. And Kara?
I may not have any.
You should have a couple, like on page 14. I mean, they're just little words, like the outside resources for sexual harassment support. If we even keep that section, the first couple were.
Gotcha.
Yep, instead of being in black, were highlighted in green. My, that's my bust. And then, in advance, I just want to let you know, this has not been formally formatted. Bridgette and I sat down and tried to, and we got through it a long way, but then we got, we started getting into some subsections and little Roman numeral ones and twos, and we said, you know what? It's a first draft. If you don't mind, Kara, I'd like to defer to your expertise on that.
Absolutely.
So, so, starting out, if I could, on page one, the purpose is pretty much the same between the 2020 version and what's been recommended. The red, of course, is the new language. The first, the first change that they recommend, starting with this policy and grievance procedure, applies on the first page. I recommend we get rid of that very last sentence, both in the second to last paragraph under purpose, and do the same thing and actually eliminate the last section paragraph, because all they do is tell you where you can find other information within the policy. We don't normally do that. I didn't find it particularly helpful, but that's a recommendation to you, and I didn't want to eliminate it without your permission.
So, you were saying, just for clarification, in the red paragraphs on page one, the first paragraph, you would like to eliminate the sentence definitions through policy? And then, in the second paragraph, you would like to basically scratch that whole?
Correct. Yes, so.
Yep, and I think we, we went through this in the last round as well, because we had a similar issue.
Yeah, there's a lot of redundancy, and I, I think, you know, in good faith to try and send people in other places. We just don't need it. You get there eventually on your own.
All right, I will mark it, and then we can, we'll open it up to discussion once we've gone through. And Pam and Liz, feel free to jump in if you have questions before we move on.
Yeah.
It's kind of an open forum.
Please.
I will say, I'm noticing in the first paragraph, in the red, we have in parentheses Title IX Sexual Harassment, and in parentheses Non-Title IX Sexual Harassment. Are they both defined terms?
Where are you? I'm sorry.
In the first red paragraph.
Right here. Title IX Sexual Harassment, and then, go ahead.
I just see that there's two prens, one that notes Title IX Sexual Harassment, one that notes Non-Title IX Sexual Harassment.
Correct.
One is not in quotes, and one is in quotes.
Right, because I think the reason they put it in quotes, and that comes right from their go-by, is because there's sexual harassment that, if it meets the criteria and is supported by it, there are different things within Title IX that you have to prove. Or we use other policies that we have in the district, our favorite 161.1, and believe it or not, we have 414. So, but they do, they are both defined terms, Kara.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm going to go ahead and put quotes.
Instead of parentheses.
Around Title IX Sexual Harassment.
Okay.
Just for now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep. The rest of the changes, just on page one, are simple. We don't say school board policy. We technically just go in our policies and go right to board policy under Roman numeral one. I thought, among others, you know, again, those are just, those are scratch outs on my piece, thinking they're a little wordy, but again, wanted you to see that I, they were included. So, if anybody disagrees. Okay. Okay. Moving on, let me know if I go too fast, to page two. And obviously, what's scratched out under Roman numeral one thereafter is old language that, you know, we just took out because it wasn't included in the new one, and I didn't think there was a basis for keeping it, okay? Section number two, the definitions and other provisions applicable to sexual harassment. That first, number one, under paragraph two, is the, is their definition. And what they did is they go in, and we did too, but we did it later on in our original policy, and they give you specific types of behavior that might constitute sexual harassment. And so, A through D were included, and NE, to some extent, were included in our original 2020 version, all the way through F, and G was added. That additional language was added. And then, there was no H, the teasing or name-calling or sexual characteristics. So, I removed that one. But if you take a look, you can see those same A through G in the policy itself that New Hampshire School Board recommends, and they're on page 23.
So, the language of G. You know, we're defining what sexual harassment is. So, it's verbal harassment and harassing suggestively, but then touching or groping. But then, we sort of have this whole other idea about touching or groping. I just guess I'm questioning whether that really fits in the sexual harassment, or whether it needs a parentheses. It's such, it's, it's not a definition. It's like, you are never allowed to do this, which is true and good.
Well, it's not to me, I'm sorry, it's not meant to be a definition. It's meant to be an example of something that could constitute sexual harassment.
Um, but then, you don't need the rest of that paragraph. Be like, touching, if it's just the definite, you know, the example, then, you know, going into touching and groping will always constitute, that's not a definition, that's not part of the definition.
And if you continue it from the actual beginning of the sentence, which is in print one, behaviors that often constitute prohibited sexual harassment include touching of a sexual nature or groping. That's the natural formation of that sentence. So, I think Pam's point is that it just sort of continues on to naming a prohibited activity underneath an example setting.
That's fine.
So, I think.
Yep, that's fine. I just, that's in red, so that's their go-by, their recommendation, so.
I, we can certainly come back and discuss, but I think I would agree with Pam that it should probably just end with touching of a sexual nature.
And maybe that idea that that's always prohibited belongs somewhere else, just.
Right, so we'll just check on it.
Well, I think it does, by the mere virtue of number one, which says prohibited sexual harassment and lists them, so you're right.
Yeah.
Yes, you're right.
And, but there's also without consent. So, even if it's a, you know, that's the other piece of it.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because you would, you would like to note that sexual touching or groping, even if consensual, is a violation of school policy?
Well, if it's without consent.
So, then you can just say touching of a sexual nature or groping without.
Without consent, yeah, that's fine.
Although, then I think we're, yeah.
But.
Although, there's instances that you can have consent.
No, 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 here's where it gets more complicated. A student never can consent to be groped by a faculty member, ever. It doesn't matter about the aid. And I think that's why they put it in there.
That is covered extensively elsewhere.
Yeah.
So, I do think that we are covered. I mean, and I, but I do agree that I think because of the ambiguity, and because we're really just listing examples of what could be, of what could constitute, I think we're fine with touching of a sexual nature or groping.
Period.
Period.
Okay.
Because to Pam's point, it's not a definition explicitly.
Also, on that one, I just, sexual harassment as a form of sex discrimination is strictly prohibited, and I would just get rid of by the district and make that a period.
Where are you, Pam?
Back to print one.
The first sentence.
Oh, the first sentence, okay.
Strictly prohibited, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Moving on, then, under the next paragraph, starting with such behaviors, which is number two, I just went ahead and added in their language, and then tailored it to our board policies, which would be the 161, and the, which is the other kinds of discrimination, discrimination in 539, which is our bullying policy. And then, I recommend, again, after the listing of the RSA statutes, that we end the paragraph after A colon 27, because again, it goes on, you know, and it's directive as to if you go to the definition, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Okay. I do, I can tell you, but I, I've written them in here, if you're, if you're interested, but number three, again, all new language. I did include where it says sections, and it has the paragraphs. I put in the Roman numerals that now apply, but I, if it's okay with you all, I'd like to leave them. I have them, but I have a feeling they may change.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
And then, at the end of that paragraph, under two, section two, that goes on to page three, at the end of the paragraph in red, I added, process in accordance with board. It should be board policies 161.1 comma 414 or 539.
Where are we?
One more time, Karen. 161.1 I have.
161.1, okay. And 414, which is our other sexual harassment policy, not Title IX, or 539, which is our bullying.
Okay.
Um. Oh, I see, you're in the middle of paragraph two.
Yeah. Just for consistency's sake, the second sentence on the top of page three, you abbreviate section, and we write it out in most of the other instances I've seen so far, so we should have one way of doing it.
Yeah. You'd like it all written out?
I think it'll, it'll always go to the full word section. I think that's just, there's a little bit of like federal law that drops in here, and they abbreviate things.
I think it, because if it's coming right from the New Hampshire School Board.
It is, but we can do what we want.
Yeah, no, I'm just flagging it.
So, do you want it all small, or do you want it to, oh, capital S and spell it out?
Uh, let's look for context, but I think it's always a full word.
The other ones you had capitalized.
Yeah, yep.
And then, yeah, so capital section, fully spelled out.
Okay.
Is a good, like a good rule.
Fully spelled.
And then, I know we've gone back and forth about this, so I wanted to get, the last time we've talked about it, we were going to do board policy number or policy number?
Right, I think we're mostly going, we've, I've consistently tried to do board policy.
Board policy?
Yeah, I did at the end there.
So, what, and how about, but not, so I just want to make sure we're not doing school board policy, but we are doing board policy.
Correct.
So, anytime we see the word policy, we're going to add board.
Yep.
Great.
Yep. Okay, um, the other are small changes under three, one through four. I mean, so I, if those are okay. Section four, definitions, all of them, okay, the first two, actual knowledge and complainant, consent, which is in here, it was in our version, it was not in the New Hampshire School Board, but it's, I, I added it, I think it's very important when we're talking about without consent. Okay, so they know what it is. Dating violence was added in our 2020. All the others down to, then you go to domestic violence, even though it's a form of sexual harassment, is, they didn't define it, but we did. And 2020 version, and I think we should leave it, that's my recommendation. We talk about educational programs or activities, and that's number nine. So, I just am pointing those out. They are consistent in that they've been there before, but they're not in New Hampshire School Board, nor is 11, which defines what a recipient is. Because you have your complainant, your respondent, and your recipient. Sorry, there's so many, you know.
And we actually went back and forth in the last time we discussed this around whether or not we should use recipient, because after we defined it, I think we only used it like once in the entire policy. So, something to keep an eye out for. I'm not going to necessarily belabor the point this time around, but.
Okay. The other one is, that we included is retaliation.
Which needs a quote.
Which is a biggie, and we left that in there.
Needs a quote?
Open quote.
Yep.
Yep, it didn't get an open quote on the front end?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Moving down to the very bottom of the page, they do sexual harassment under 15, and then they divide up sexual harassment into the Title IX that you were asking about, Kara, and then the non-Title IX. So, I only point that out because that's where Bridgette and I started really banging our heads, like, how do we, how do we format this? So, and I added, under, under Title IX Sexual Harassment, that where it says school district, and I crossed out school, you need to put a aid district employee conditioning and aid benefitter service. Didn't make it in there.
Where are we?
I'm at the very bottom.
This one's a thick one. So, we're currently discussing Title IX Sexual Harassment as a defined term, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If you go to the last sentence on the page where I crossed out school district.
On page five.
Yeah, it should just say A before, instead of school.
Oh, yep. So, aid district employee.
Correct.
Conditioning an aid benefit for service of an education program or activity. And then, you've gotten rid of the word quid pro quo.
Correct. They don't use it in the new, that's, that's a term I use.
They took out quid pro quo?
They don't, correct, they didn't take it out. They don't, they didn't put it in. I put it in, in our original one. Quid pro quo, hostile work environment, and then the enumerated offenses. So, they did put in, obviously, the sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, or stalking. Those are your state or federal laws that apply under Title IX. So, I included those. Number three.
Stalking is not listed. These are all defined terms? Sexual assault, dating, violence, domestic violence, or stalking as defined in state or federal law.
Stalking isn't capitalized, but the others are. Is that on purpose, or is that?
No, that was just, let me see.
Stalking is defined.
Stalking is defined, so it should be probably capitalized. Yep, I missed that one.
Makes sense.
Yep, stalking should be too, because it is a defined term. So, um, so then, number three, which is, mine's, mine's numbered, the paragraph starting unwelcome sex-based, are you all with me? The number three paragraph on the, um, this is one of the big differences between the 2020 and the 2024, is under 2020, you have to have, conduct is determined by reasonable person, it has to be severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive. So, they put in the red language. In our original edition, 2020, we further defined severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive. So, those are included right there in that same paragraph. They're not really defined terms under the definitions, but they're spoken to as part of the element, so I did, I did further define them. If you think it, you know, makes it a little friendlier, but.
So, my concern about the defin, the definitions of severe perva, like, I mean, is rape, I mean, we're describing rape here. So, is this like, that, is that the standard under the law? That sexual harassment has to, if it has to be all three of these things, it has to be rape? Is that like the, you know, it just seems so.
The benchmark is so high.
Sets the bar so high that people maybe think that they don't qualify and may not report. And there are certainly things that I would consider severe that are not that, don't meet that bar. That are not at that level.
I agree.
And, um, so, I, I have a, I, I worry about that being our definition. When you're saying you have to meet all three of these standards, and the sta, and it looks like that's standard, leaves out a lot that I would consider sexual harassment.
No, it, I mean, severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, the language is included in the go-by, it's just not defined.
Yeah.
So, where, where did this language come from?
From our original 2020 version.
So, the board, or at the time, the New Hampshire School Board Association, or state law? Like, at some point, someone recommended these as examples of.
Correct. They were further, they were further defined within it, yes.
Okay, so, I think that maybe more, it sounds like maybe more modern, thinking that there's a much more broad spectrum of what could be considered severe.
Was it always that you had to mean all three?
In 2020, yes. It was a much higher burden. The Biden administration lessened it. They said, or, you know, even have, but not, we're back to all three.
Okay, well.
That was a huge piece of it. This was a big deal.
This is not a friendly victim addition.
No.
As friendly as 2024 would have been. But 2020 was vacated.
So, let me ask this, and we don't have to decide this today, but let me ask the board members, do you think that it is worthy of our time to leave these in, but broaden what we consider to be examples of or conditions for severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, and essentially rewrite it for what we feel is appropriate? Or do we think it, it's not necessary, and we could eliminate it entirely?
I, I would eliminate it entirely, I think, because I think when you deal with examples like that in cases like this, then it leaves people out that may be, you know, with, you know, the sort of the famous quote about obscenity, right? You know, when you see it, like, I want people to be able to bring these cases and make the case that it was severe, and.
Right, so they get to decide.
And, and then, there's a process beyond that, but.
Yep.
I also think, I agree with Pam. I also think it protects you, because remember, this is what will be used in a court or not, and, and, and so, if you have it like that, then you're going to be compelled, right, to prove that piece, and by being not as, as, as tight examples, I think you're in better places. I, I worry about that.
Right, yeah, if we dismissed an employee for, for this, then they could say, but it doesn't meet your definition.
It doesn't meet your own policy criteria.
Exactly.
All right. Liz, are you good?
Yes, I agree with that.
So, in terms of getting rid of this language, we just need to remember to strike it, not delete it. But I think that we are in agreement that it should come out.
Can I, but look at the note ahead, what they put in there, because they said, conduct that meets some, but not all of the elements of sexual harassment will not be Title IX sexual harassment, but may constitute other non-Title IX.
But this is our definition of Title IX sexual harassment?
Yeah.
And I, again, I think there are things that are severe sexual harassment that may not be rape, or, or may not even be physical contact. I mean, sexual harassment is not always sexual. Is not always sexual assault or sexual touching. You could have severe sexual harassment that doesn't involve any bodily contact whatsoever.
Well, that's where we see the, when social media is used inappropriately, and there's that emotional impact that it has, that isn't touching or anything else. So, it has the elements of the same damage.
Okay.
All right.
And actually, can we go back to the red? So, the red language is what is being suggested by NHSBA to add as a note? Or is this your note?
Um, hang on a second, let me look at it exactly here, under. Title IX Sexual Harassment is.
It's in it just like that?
Right here.
From what I see. This standard requires consideration of all the facts and circumstances, including but not limited to the features and ability status of the harasser and victim, and the number of individuals involved, and authority.
Yeah, no, it's from there.
Conduct that meets some, but not all elements of this type of sexual harassment would not be Title IX sexual harassment, but may nonetheless constitute non-Title IX sexual harassment.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's ver, it's verbatim, except for nonetheless.
And I would say, I, if we could consider changing the terms harasser and victim to complainant and respondent, just to be consistent with our, with our language. Makes sense. And then, and then I'm good with the rest of it. I just, I just wasn't sure if that was a KFA special.
Nope.
Or if it came from the School Board Association. I'm more inclined to accept a KFA addition.
Before we move on, if we could go back to the definition of consent on page four. You made a very important point earlier that I think we should have in the definition of consent, which is that no student can consent to sexual conduct with a district employee. Right now, we say no person under 18 can give legal consent.
16.
16, sorry. But I think we need to make clear that.
Student.
No student can give legal consent to an employee of the district.
Could it be an extension of that sentence? Under New Hampshire law, a person under the age of 16 cannot give legal consent, and no student can, can ever.
And I'll find the exact, I'll pull it out of there.
Yeah.
Per board policy.
It's in, it's in, it's in the law, so.
Yeah.
So, I'll find the RSA.
I feel like we've looked at language similar to that not too long ago, you find it.
I'm sure we have at other places, but I just thought it would be something we should include in the definition.
For sure. So, it's a good cross-reference. Thank you.
Yep.
Hello.
Barb. Um, so now, if we're down on, still, still on page six, can we get Barb? Oh, yeah, okay.
She's quick.
Welcome, Barb.
Did you get my text?
I did, I texted you back.
Oh, you left my phone.
Totally fine. So, just to catch you up, we are currently reviewing Concord School Board Policy 415. While it may not feel like a first draft, because we have seen this before, it is a first draft, because we're going back to the previous Title IX.
Oh, right.
Yep. And so, everything has been pretty.
Green, and yellow, and back to green, and back to red.
You know exactly where we are then, so.
Yeah, we're green.
And then, there's some green. So, we are on page six of 27, when you're ready, and we're about mid-page.
We're down at the red on the last, second to last paragraph, where it says, conduct that meets one or more of the above will not constitute Title IX. And they changed some of the wording, but it has, you have to be within the continental United, in, within the United States, excuse me. And we have to have control over both our, the, and we can change it again if you want to. It says harasser and respondent, which is really the same thing. It should be the respondent and the complainant. Okay, and the context in which the harassment occurred. And then, in the last sentence, the same conduct may however be addressed under board policy 161.1. Is in there. Then, the follow-on paragraph that starts with regard to concurrent enrollment, same language from the 2020 version, and it is consistent with the school board's language. Then, they go on to the non-Title IX sexual harassment, that is all new language, word for word.
On the second to last sentence, I think there's just a typo, I can't.
On what page?
Under non-sexual, non-Title IX sexual harassment, first paragraph. I just can't figure out what the word is supposed to be, and pure verbal.
Where, um.
Second. Second sentence, second to last sentence in the.
Oh, gotcha, request for sexual favors, I think it's for, hang on a second.
And or maybe?
And or, let's see, non-Title IX sexual harassment is. Is defined as favors and other verbal comma, non-verbal or physical contact.
Should be other.
And.
And to other.
Other.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
No.
No, me neither, sorry guys. Trying to, so.
Well, like I said, we were working on formatting.
Yeah.
It's okay. You always take it so personally.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a jab on you, I promise, we just want it to be clean.
Yeah, no.
And so those are the new sections that were added for non-Titel sexual hara- non-Title IX. Are there any questions there?
Um, I am gonna be that, be that girl and say it needs to be earlier in the definition section in alphabetical order. Um, so it'll need to be eleven at some point.
And supportive measures.
I think they put it in under the sexual hara- I looked at that too.
I know, I've seen it.
But they, they're, it's weird, because they put it.
You're saying it's underneath?
Sexual harassment, because you have Title IX and then you have non-Title IX.
See, they put under the definition of sexual harassment, then they put all of this.
Yep.
And then comes supportive measures.
So it's sexual harassment and then there's two subtypes.
Did they put stalking under?
Correct, Title IX, non-Title IX.
Stalking is separate.
Stalking is not defined.
Okay, I mean, as long as, as long as it's a sub.
Stalking is not a definition.
No, stalking is one that, that was added in the twenty twenty version, in ours.
Okay.
But I don't, oh, because it's.
It isn't in there, like that was something the board did.
No, it just looks terrible, I don't like how supportive measures is the last definition. Like these two definitions are down here after you had all this other jumble. But if you're going in alphabetical order, I get.
Yeah, that's how they, I guess they defined them.
All right, that's good, okay, so let's actually, are we good with the language on nine Title IX sexual harassment? Which we'll just need to capitalize, sexual harassment.
Yep.
On non-Title IX?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect, and then other instead of pure. Get down to, uh, the last one, supportive measures. These are the same measures, one through three are the same, um, that they've included. On our twenty twenty version, we also added four fi- four through eight as additional, because those are some of the ones we've actually used. Um, so I kept those in there, I recommend they stay. And there're just a few small changes on the last sentence in the, in that remaining paragraph about they're confidential, um, with exclusive exceptions stated and required in, in the section below, which is, is the confidentiality section, whatever that ends up being right now. And then we, so I'm gonna, I'll keep going unless there are any questions, okay? Then Title IX coordinator, um, it used to be you had to have the name, the place, everything else. Um, got rid of that and, um, under the new, and so, excuse me, in the old one. It talks about the duties, you have to respond, pretty much same language, except for, as I said, uh, the red. I can take specific, general reports, help them with formal. And then it goes down A through G, and then the little Roman numerals are all the things that you're, that the Title IX coordinator is responsible for doing. Uh, Cara, I, I wasn't sure, again, I, I capitalized the first letter of each because I wanted to be, I'm not sure. But I think we have in the past, so I left those. Um, F, which is there, is a new, was something that New Hampshire School Board put in that was not in our earlier version, so I added that.
I think there's an extra comma there.
Where?
Or an extra end.
Coordinating with district and school level personnel to facilitate and assure implementation of investigations and remedies.
And.
And helping to assure.
So it should probably be no comma, investigations and remedy is comma and helping to assure the.
Yeah, and it should, I think it should be.
Otherwise might meet its obligations.
Not according to New Hampshire, if it was just copyright from New Hampshire.
It was, I ca- I did, I didn't change a word, you guys, I left it, because I know you all want to see the changes. And I don't think it should be assure, I think it should be ensure.
I was gonna say it, and then I was like, keep it to yourself, Cara.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure means they're there now.
Yeah.
So I changed that. Everything else going down the page, I inserted, well, I still have sec, but I'll put the big is section. I'll spell it out with that and insert the right numbers or the right paragraphs, obviously, Roman numerals. Uh, we get down to training, pretty much, there weren't a bunch of changes, just small word changes. In case anybody has any questions about those.
No. And I apologize, I mean.
Number.
Just so that everybody here has likely seen this at some point, but because we've recently seen it, I'm fairly comfortable with moving forward at a quicker pace.
No, no, that's.
But if anyone is, has a question, please jump in, because I know we've seen it recently, but it is very dense language.
Yeah, there, it's com- yeah, it's complex, so. All right, moving on to training, down at the bottom of page nine. Um, again, they wanted to add under this policy or C board policy, and I, I just left, I, I figured it was easy under any responsibilities. I took that out, I'm happy to leave it in otherwise. All the way down one through five, if you just take a look, simple word joint, changes. Decision hyphen makers, I, I tried to keep it consistent all the way through, couldn't remember, did we do the hyphen last time?
Why are you bringing it up again, we had such a fight.
I know, whether decision maker should be cap.
It is currently not hyphenated in the definition.
I got it wrong.
Pro or anti hyphen here?
Okay.
It's our policy on the hyphen. Different crowd now.
I would not be pro hyphen.
I am also not pro hyphen.
Get rid of that hyphen.
It's gone, sorry about that. Is it one word or two?
It's two.
Two words.
Two words.
I mean, I would not, I'm not pro the phrase decision makers, let's just be. But, but if we're gonna use it.
Unfortunately, it is a title within, believe it or not, they call them IDMs.
Yeah, that's fine.
Initial decision maker.
Decision makers, two words, no hyphen.
Okay, and should makers be capitalized?
Yes, because that's, I mean, you know.
The title within.
Got it. Okay, um, again, confidentiality, um. A, provide both the parties due process. I crossed if allegations concern or a formal complaint has been filed, I can't remember why I crossed it out, to be honest with you. I didn't like the language.
Allegations, so. Examples of required disclosure include information to either party to the extent necessary to provide the parties due process during the Title IX grievance process. Preen, if allegations concern Title IX sexual harassment or a formal complaint has been filed instituting Title IX grievance process under section Rome three, cat A. I'm not sure why it's needed.
Yeah, they put it in there and I, I, I put it in there and then I crossed it out, because I, again, I didn't like it, but, um, I want to show it to you. So I did add in under C, our number, Board Policy four thirty-two, because that's our neglecting abuse. Then I spelled out New Hampshire DOE, because I thought that was the first time, it's the first time I saw it used. So, um, we could put it in prens after if you wanted to, as an acronym, but I don't recall it being used afterwards. And then I just, on number two below, just start, I got rid of additionally any and just went with any, small word changes there. Then went, if you go down to the bottom on number three, all the way A through F. Let's see, I'm gonna make sure retaliation, they only A, B, C, D, yep, same things. They use small Roman numerals, we use letters, I defer to Cara. Uh, retaliation, I'm not making fun of you, I promise.
No, it's okay, I, I.
I'm not sure.
She's the one, it's become fun, let's do it.
Retaliation prohibited, um, they, they make a point, I think it's a good one, that just because, you know, let's say somebody comes forward and makes a statement, and then it's not substantiated after the fact, other, because we can't ma- meet the burden of preponderance of the evidence, that doesn't mean it was a false statement, it just means. So they actually, that's what that means there.
I, I think that's an important point.
Yep.
I read it four times.
Didn't get.
And that's not the, I could not understand what the point was that was trying to be made of finding of responsibility alone. Like who is being found?
Your decision maker will decide whether it's substantiated or not, and let's say they don't substantiate the allegation. That means, that does not mean that the vi- the complainant made a materially false statement.
So I, I think to say, if, the, you know, the fact that a complaint may not be substantiated does not in, is insufficient to conclude that a, the complainant made a materially false statement.
Yep.
I think like, let's put that in plainer English.
Yep, you got it.
I agree.
Um, so Pam, what would you like there, a finding isn't?
It, um. A find, a finding that a complaint is not substantiated. Is insufficient to conclude that a pers-.
A finding of responsibility.
Is made a materially false statement in bad faith.
I understand it, but not, only because it's, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
That makes no sense at all.
So is there anywhere else in the policy where we talk about whether or not there are consequences for a person making a materially false statement in bad faith?
No.
So this is the only time this comes up.
Yep.
So I do think we need to be explicit and careful.
Yep.
With our language, because what we're suggesting is that, that it is possible that if the finding is not substantiated, that somebody could then sit, step forward and say, this was a false claim made against me in bad faith. But we have no process for that. In the policy.
Yeah, so it's two things, you could be punitive where you shouldn't be, or somebody gets off with.
Or there just wasn't.
Doing a mean thing.
There wasn't enough evidence.
Yeah.
And we're basically in this sentence saying that there is a path forward for someone to, to come forward and say that this person has made false statements against me, against me in bad faith. And the fact that you didn't substantiate the claim means that I'm right. And that, I think that's what we're trying to say, can't happen. But it sounds like we don't have a formal process.
It's both ways really, but I don't want to make it more complicated.
Yeah.
I mean, if the, yeah, because the victim could be, if it's not substantiated, you could look at the victim and say, potentially, well, you made a false statement, because it isn't true. Doesn't mean it isn't true, it just means we can't prove it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Likewise, if the, um, respondent says, I didn't do it, and we find that they did do it. Did they lie in saying they didn't do it just because we came up with it? Maybe, maybe not, you hope you got it right, but you wouldn't then charge them on top of that for making a materially false statement when they said, I didn't do what you say I did. So it's pretty complicated, I'm happy to, that's school board language.
Do you wanna, or do you wanna massage it a little bit and come back to us with what you think would be appropriate?
Sure. I will simplify.
Yeah, make it, make it simple.
As much plain language.
Yep. Going down the rest of the page, all I did was capitalize the first letters, um, on A through F. And then, um. I took out on number three on the top of twelve, page twelve, where it talks about, um, they, they specifically train, they talk about the Title IX coordinators, investigators and decision makers. I, I just went with personnel.
Yeah.
Keep it simple. Um, added in a section there. And then under X, so what is that, nine, Roman, records and record keeping? Is that eleven, okay, yep, um, added in an additional, um, criteria they wanted. B is, is new.
Basis for the district's conclusion that its response was not deliberately in.
Yeah, and that's.
I'm assuming that's link, legal.
It's legal term, deliberately indifferent means that at, did we act the way we should have act, know, act, that we should have acted reasonably, knowing all the circumstances that we knew at the time, or we just say, we're gonna ignore this, we would be deliberately indifferent under that definition if we just didn't move forward knowing what we knew at the time. It's a pretty high standard, thank goodness. So if we were to ignore something, knowing somebody made a report and we just said, nah, doesn't make sense, we're not gonna look into it, we could be found to be deliberately indifferent.
And, and this is as it pertains, yeah. For in terms of, you're keeping a record.
Correct.
Of any actions that you've, that you took, including any supportive measures. You are recording the basis for the district's conclusion that its response to the complaint was not deliberately indifferent.
Correct.
So maybe to the complaint might be helpful, I'm not sure. And documentation which, and then Rome's small one and two.
Yes.
So this is really about what your responsibility is.
Correct, and, and really what this pertains to is where the district decides after looking at the facts, we look at it and we say, either it doesn't fall into the jurisdiction under Title IX for some reason, let's say we didn't have control over the activity or the program. So I would document that fact, but then I'm gonna look at, does it fall under one of our other policies? Okay, so it's, they're asking us to go through the mental exercise of what did you consider at the time to determine whether our conclusions were reasonable? Just doing that documentation alone and the thought, the analysis will help keep us from being deliberately indifferent. But it is a legal term.
That's okay.
Okay? I think, any other questions about, um, I can, and then under two B, which is in red there, all materials used to train, I could be consistent and go with personnel again, like I did above, instead of muring everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Decision makers.
Or just all training materials?
Oh, what's that?
All training materials?
Used to train pers- all mater- oh, all training materials.
Period.
Used to, no.
All training materials, period.
Just all training materials?
Yeah.
Period. Okay, sorry, you guys.
Isn't that what you were saying, Cara?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not getting it.
No, that's okay.
I'm just saying, I'm trying.
This sentence added in.
I'm trying to help you out.
No, I appreciate it, please, got it.
Yeah, I was waiting to like, and.
And?
That's it, okay. All right, uh, moving on, page thirteen. Very, very small, I, I crossed out he, she, or she, he, we're still doing the, hopefully I, we wanted to be.
Person may report sexual harassment whether relating to themself or another person.
Or that person.
That's perfect, yeah.
And then we, I changed the twenty-four hours, because we had agreed earlier that we were gonna go the end of the next school day. So I added that in, question, do we want, for some reason, I went back to the original, I can't tell you why I did it, other than I probably followed up. Thing, we, we did use the italicized, okay, and then I put in bold, the failure to report will be, will subject the, put the employee, subject the employee to discipline up to and including dismissal, I know why I did that, I wanted to make sure I gave proper notice. Do you care whether we italicize or bold, or you just want to leave it alone? That is our language, it's not in the go by.
I mean, if it's, if it's new language that we are drafting as part of the, a new policy, we need to indicate it in red.
No, it's not, it's language from the old.
So this is how the existing policy looks?
Correct, from, it's, it's the current twenty twenty version.
Okay.
Even in the italicized and the.
Bold.
Bolded.
I mean, it's very, it's very bold. I mean, my personal preference would not be, it would be no italics and no bold. We tend to save italics for notes, like legal notes, editors' notes, things like that. So it's sort of essentially suggesting that there's extra material, uh, that we'd like the reader to understand. But this doesn't really qualify for that.
No, both of these are like to make a point.
Right.
So, we don't need, yeah.
I don't think we need it.
Right, okay.
I would agree.
So we want to skip a time.
Oh, you, so you actually want to talk about the content, not the format?
We were just talking about the font. The italics and the bold.
That's all we're talking about right now. Okay, um, well, you know, we, we've gone back and forth about this.
Right. Well, I see that, but that was for the, the next, the new version. This is going back to the old version, but doesn't give a time recommendation.
I thought we gave them twenty-four hours.
Saying it's in existing policy.
Used to be twenty-four.
In our existing.
In our existing policy.
Yeah.
But you're saying New Hampshire School Board Association does not have a recommendation for a timeline?
So we have reasons to be more stringent than the School Board Association on this. My concern about the language, the end of the next school day is that could be two weeks, three weeks, you know?
But if it's a vacation, the last day of school, yeah.
Last day of school, you know?
Could be twenty-four hours or, yeah.
Yeah, if it happened the last day of school, it could be the, you know, over the summer, right? When someone could be teaching in a summer camp.
Yes, exactly.
So.
And now you've got me thinking, did we switch it from the next school day to twenty-four hours? Or did we switch it from twenty-four hours to the next school day? I feel like maybe we actually switched it to twenty-four hours. So I actually think that Pam is making the point we landed on eventually.
We should stick with twenty-four hours. Yeah, because if something horrible happens on a Friday afternoon, it's not necessarily the right thing to do to wait till Monday.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I have to, I have to be honest with you, they probably will, but. I wish we could say or, and or, but it, you're right, if you have, you have a weekend or a holiday, it's gonna get delayed.
And if, scarily enough, you have someone involved in whatever the altercation is that could use this as a way to get it pushed, you know what I mean?
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the staff is very good about that.
Twenty-four hours.
Very good about that.
There we go.
I mean, without delay and no later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, that works.
Okay. And no later, I'll get rid of and in case, and in no case later, and no later. Got it. Okay. Um, going on down, I put the little graph box in there, and remember, we took it out of the one-six-one, I think it was.
Yeah, we did.
Um, and I also, sorry, an- any student should be, should have been yellow, but it's any. And then I cha- I updated New Hampshire Commission for Human Rights, they've actually changed to fifty-seven Regional Drive. I have their current address as of the twenty-seventh, it's twenty-second of April. And then the phone number changed on the Office for Civil Rights, and I have their email address. I guess my question is, I mean, I think it's important that we give them this feedback because it is true that nobody has to come directly through us. OCR would call us and say, "Did they file a report?" But they can go directly. So I think it's important we, we put that notice in there. I just didn't know if you're, do you like the format? Would you rather not put it in a box?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, good. Same thing for below number six. Um.
We just have to-
Change the colors.
Well, yeah, and it goes past the margin, so we just have to change the format of the text box.
Page thirteen, yeah. Okay. Moving to fourteen, um, again, just, sorry about green being yellow, should have been. And then, do you want me to keep, I put these in as additional support mechanisms in the event somebody, um, you know, it's mostly for the touching, the lack of consent issue, if somebody needs help, if they need to go to the hospital or whatever, this is in here and I can update all the numbers if you wanna keep it. It's in ours, it's not in the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Right. Is this, is Haven now thrive? No. Who's thrive now?
Who's what?
Is it the Cris-
Crisis Center is now thrive.
Is now thrive. So we had updated this language before, because Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire is now-
It's been renamed.
And the suicide line prevention is different.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think yes to this, as long as we update it, which we did update it for our last, uh-
One-six-one.
Version, so we can find it there.
Yeah, let's check on that.
Yep, got it. Okay, um. Unless there are any questions about the formatting, I did under two C, they put that in there, and I felt it was redundant with A because, um, two A talks about inform and discuss the available, availability, and, and it came off of and offer support measures with or without the filing of a formal complaint. That's our language, it should come over more underneath. Um, but they repeat, they say the same thing in C, so I just-
Took it out.
Took it out. I lined through it.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, if everybody's good. Um, again, just inserted Title IX, "Do you want me to capitalize sexual harassment under formal complaints, under after Title IX?"
So there, throughout this document, there is sometimes capitalization and sometimes not. So I'm sort of withholding the conversation until later, till we make those decisions. But if, if the idea is that we capitalize every defined term, then we've gotta run through this whole document-
Yep.
-and capitalize everything.
Okay.
Um, because elsewhere in the document, it is capitalized.
Yeah.
So it's just kinda, you know, I'm, I'm willing to help with whatever-
They don't, but we do.
Formatting we want.
Yeah, what difference is there?
It doesn't really, it's really just a-
Doesn't matter.
All right, so I'll put a question mark, just so we want to, okay, um. Moving on to page fifteen, I'm gonna let y'all take a look at what was added and see if you have any objections. Again, it's in red.
Yep. Works for me. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. Number s- page sixteen, very, you know, very similar wording. They did add the red line in the middle about, um, deliberate indifference, um, reports of sexual assault and plea on student harassment, repeat reports, the conduct in the complaint's report has not been adequately resolved through supportive measures. That kinda defines a little bit, um, if we were to do nothing. And then again, following on, crossing out that, right below it, even though that language appeared in the twenty-twenty version as the original, we, I struck it, don't recommend we go forward with that one. Changed he, she below to they. Um, and then down below, when we're talking about if no complaint is filed by the complained, I wanted to be sure, complaints have to be eighteen to not, for us not to notify the guardian or the parents. So I've added the, i- if it's filed by the complainant, comma, the complainant's parent or guardian, or the Title IX coordinator. Um, both there, and the same thing would apply for the respondent as well, is if somebody files a report, we have to notify the parent, the, the student obviously, but also the parent or guardian of the student if they're under eighteen.
So the next paragraph looks like it's existing already.
What does?
The next paragraph, it looks like it, we already had this.
Usually tell me where you're at.
Sure, although there is no time limit-
Yep.
-to filing a formal complaint.
Correct.
The complainant must be employed by the district or participating in or attempting to participate in the education programs or activities of the district at the time of filing.
Correct. So, really there is, because if you're not a, are you gonna say there is, because if they're not-
No, that's not what I'm gonna say. What I'm gonna say is, if somebody has left the district and they've graduated, and they were subject to inappropriate sexual misconduct by an employee of this district, I want them to file a complaint. It may not, you know, I want to know that, uh, you know, even if it is after the fact, like, so obviously-
They don't have the guts until they're graduated.
You know, I mean, we have seen a lot of this across the country.
Well, then others come forward.
It becomes a conquered police matter at that point, because we don't have jurisdiction over that person anymore. We do the employee that-
But we have jurisdiction, we may still have jurisdiction over the employee.
Absolutely.
So, and that's what, and it may not be a matter where the police feel like they can file charges, but it may still be a matter where we feel like that would, is not based on new information, appropriate conduct for somebody in our classrooms.
Right. I would agree, I totally agree with the premise, I just don't agree that it's consistent with Title IX, though. Because we don't have jurisdiction over both parties at that point.
We've had a similar situation, we didn't have jurisdiction, we did over the employee, but not of the person who made the complaint.
Right.
But the police stepped in immediately because calls-
Because it's a criminal matter as well.
So I, I, I don't know how we can compel somebody who's already graduated, of course, we wanna encourage them.
Not, yeah, right. And I, and this is in saying they're compelled to do it, this is saying we won't accept their complaint after they've graduated.
Right.
We would, you know, so really, like, I am worried about a policy that says, like, you can complain, but we're gonna just toss that in the trash, and I know we wouldn't, but that's how the-
Right. Couldn't we had or has participa- like, so it talks about they're either participating, or they're attempting to, or they're going to, you know, like, what about they, they had participated in district and, you know, like, isn't there, can't we just put that in?
I would just get rid of, although the district will initiate the Title IX grievance process, or maybe it's not, or the, maybe it's, although the district will initiate a, a personnel investigation, regardless of when a formal complaint is filed, delays in reporting may significantly impair. So we don't call it a Title IX investigation, it would be a personnel-
Right.
-investigation.
Right.
That's mean, others may feel differently, but-
No, no, you wanna close the loopholes, though. You don't, you wanna make sure that if someone has something to say, they don't feel like they're not allowed to say it.
Yeah.
Right.
No, it's good, it's a good eye.
And yes, it's a police, but I think there's probably things that, there are different criminal standards than personnel standards.
Uh, I agree with you. I'm just reading this to try to find where we can fit in language that we could suggest.
So where it says, although there is no time limit to filing a formal complaint, for complainants initiated by the complainant or their parent or guardian, the complainant must be employed by the district, comma, or have participated in, or currently participating in. If we put the have participated in, wouldn't that include anyone that was once in the district that left the district? Like, isn't it that simple?
Yeah, except for it doesn't work under the jurisdictional requirements. You have to be currently in the, for Title IX.
So, oh, I see, I see.
Yeah, we could still do it, I just not for Title IX.
Right. Oh, and that's what, that's what, okay.
So we could call it a personnel investigation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it might be, it's a fully separate sentence, which is, we've got recovering, that we understand there's no time limit, but there's these conditions.
The complainant has left the district, it will be treated as a personnel.
Exactly. So something like that, where we acknowledge that a complaint may come in
Mm-hmm.
-that is outside of the jurisdiction of the formal process, but that may initiate a personnel investigation as needed or as warranted by the superintendent.
Yeah.
I shall massage it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got it. Yep, no problem.
You got enough information on that?
Oh, yeah, right here. Okay. Um. Um, moving on to page seventeen, again, just small changes. I said if the complaint, uh, we're talking about the initial steps and notice of a formal complaint, where you have to, um, it just was redundant to me because if a complainant is under eighteen, then we have to notify the parent or the guardian, and they talk about, they put that in there, but they also talk about being non-eligible, so I thought it was a little redundant. Um, if the complaint is under, I just put is under eighteen, okay? Um, same thing with the respondent, then capitalized all the first le- first words in A through F. Okay? I think that was it on that. Um, again, page, am I going too fast? Eighteen, I'm just, again, word choices. Um, and I should probably spell out IDM again, under six, where I cry, I did put in IDM, and then I struck it in red and used the acronym, because I always spell it out the first time, and then I put the acronym in there, so I recommend under six, where it says initial decision maker, then IDM should be in parentheses, so I will spell out. Um, again, I added in the sections on my dra- draft. Under number seven, um, we're gonna seek guidance from the district's general counsel, and G and C should be capitalized, is the title there. I missed that the first time. Um, everything else, I think. If you had, if there are any questions?
Mm-mm.
Nope? Okay.
IDM doesn't have to be a definition.
It's what? I'm sorry.
IDM doesn't need to be a definition.
IDM is the initial decision maker, and it is a, um, there's, there's the initial decision maker, and then there's the, the appeal decision maker. So where are you as?
I just didn't know if those needed to be included in the definitions section.
So, we actually discussed this before, um, because we had talked about the fact that there are, there's decision makers, but then there's two subsets of decision makers that come up only in the second half.
Yep.
Um, I don't honestly remember where we landed, but I think it, I, if I remember right, it proved difficult to put it in the definitions section because I don't think we have a formal definition in state law or Title IX, or maybe it's in Title IX.
It is in ti- it is in here. You know what I can do? I can go back, now that I'm thinking about this, I can pull our twenty-twenty version, because we had it done, and it was hours later. Remember that, after our meeting, they changed it?
Look at the most-
So I'll look at that to see what we decided to do with IDM. And also, no, we already figured out decision maker, so, okay. Um, everything else, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but please ask, give any questions, um, on that page. If there are, if there are none, moving on to page nineteen, again, capitalized in the titles. Um, I went from he, she, or she, he to they. Um, in seven C, um, I capitalized the code of student conduct, that is a policy that we have. Um, I thought it should be capitalized. Then on page twenty, you have your, your timelines. I think that's pretty explanatory.
I don't know. Oh, I'm, I made a note to take it out, I think it's just old. Uh, sorry, we just mentioned that we're gonna take out some of this underlining, just because like-
Yeah, and the numbers, I don't know why they showed up.
In here.
Yeah, but I just think it like pops up halfway through, all of a sudden you start underlining things, so I've marked it to remove in the formatting fund we're gonna have later.
Maybe you should, um-
Get a job at NHES now. They would fire me immediately. Um, but I will also just mention, this is something that didn't come up before, which is that now we have this section seven with a whole new definitions section.
Range of discipline sanction?
Page nineteen of twenty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Those are the sanctions.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, so, well, I guess, I mean, they are definitions, but they're just-
The types of sanctions.
Descriptions of sanctions, so.
It's just like the IDM.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. It's like a whole new policy.
Well, also like sanction, some of these are words that-
They're tough, yeah.
No, people know, like, I-
You mean they shouldn't be defined, because they know it?
Because sanctions has a commonly understood meaning, and we're actually using it within the commonly understood.
Right, I think we could easily remove the quotations, and the sentence would be perfectly defined.
Yeah, so I think you can do that, yeah.
Get rid of-
Get rid of quotes.
Um, and-
You got it.
I agree that we should never use the phrase IDM, I don't think we need to repeat it with parentheses. I think we should just spell it out every time, because it is not, it is not a common-
So get rid of it.
It's not like a CEO.
Right.
Okay.
And it shouldn't become, just to be clear.
We do not recommend getting that playing with it, though.
Got it. Gone. Okay. All right, moving on to this, page twenty-one of twenty-seven, very few changes. On my version, I added in the sections, but I'm not gonna bore you with those in case they change. Um, got rid of, you know, just add in a few extra words and-
We're gonna pause you just real quick.
Yeah.
And, um, on page twenty, there are some days, uh, where we talk about the timeline.
Mm-hmm.
So we had also discussed timeline.
We did, but we had changed the timelines as a group when I was working with the New Hampshire School Board on the twenty-twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
This is, um, these were the original ones for the twenty-twenty.
Okay.
And they're still recommended as the same ones by New Hampshire School Board.
And, and by the district?
Correct.
This is a timeline that you were comfortable with?
Correct.
Okay.
They go on, these go on forever. These can, can go on a very long time, up to six months sometimes.
Okay, all right, please continue.
Twenty, page twenty-one, again, just some small, and I'll slow down here. I would, I would say we need a space under one F before, between F and G, but other than that, just some small word changes that are explained in red. Twenty-two. Um. I got rid of some, what I thought was a lot of wordy stuff, like toward completion, just put progress.
Mm-hmm.
Um, smaller changes. Ooh, there's IDM again.
There it is.
I know, I saw that.
And there's a hyphen.
Number four. Under determination of responsibility and additional, an initial, initial decision maker. The IDM will provide five days for ea- each for, oh, never mind. It looked a little weird.
Five days each for supplementary-
Limited follow-up questions, yeah. Okay, never mind.
Right. It probably doesn't need the comma, but.
Do you want me to get ris- after supplementary? Is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 it's totally fine. It's just, it's an awkward sentence to see, but when, when you read it, it's okay.
So here where we use-
I thought a word was missing, but then when I read it out loud, I'm like, oh, now I get where it's going.
Yep. Where, where I use the acronyms here, the IDM, the ID- do you want me to spell them out in each one? It's kinda wordy. Happy to do it, but-
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the acronym.
As long as we're consistent.
Very specific section.
Yes.
Okay.
But then you don't use it every, like, it goes back and forth, so.
And we use it on the next page under five, six, and seven, and eight.
But not nine.
Nope. Nope, we don't.
So.
Yeah.
So I need to be very consistent, um.
I just feel to use so much that should be in the definitions section.
Yeah.
As an IDM.
Well, let's, let's look at, because I agree, because even if we didn't decide that, maybe because this language is- Well, let's, let's look at, because I agree, because even if we didn't decide that, maybe because this language is different, because the, I, I think maybe the newer language really didn't talk about the decision maker nearly as much. Like, I don't think this was in there.
In the, yes, that's right.
Biden administration's version, I think that the question came up because we didn't have all this language. We're repeating this over and over again. So I think maybe Liz does have a point that it's worth having it in the definitions section.
Okay. Got it. IDM, just, yeah, initial decision maker. You got it. Oh, no hyphen.
Yep, no hyphen.
Okay, got it.
As the IDM, I think it doesn't matter.
So once I, but once I, you guys are gonna kill me. Once I define it in the, in the definitions section does not mean I have to capitalize it and spell it out? And not use the acronym?
Not if it's in the, if it's in the definitions section, you can call it an IDM.
In the definitions.
Yes, because they've seen.
Initial decision maker, IDM, you got it. Okay, perfect. That's what I'm gonna do. Yes, okay. Twenty-four. Okay. I hyphenated dismissal of a formal complaint and added in the additional language. Said even though it gets dismissed as a Title IX, it may go under one sixty-one point one. I mean, we'll look at other ways that it could potentially be handled. Um, it is bolded.
Because, I mean, you're, you're demonstrating that the written notice should be bolded, is what I'm interpreting that as.
And then we move into the appeal process. Initial determination of responsibility from your initial decision maker. Then you move on, um, and goes through. I'm sorry, some of these paragraphs get a little longer and we're gonna have to number them separately, but just a small change of words as you go through. Nothing, nothing major.
There's even an ADM.
And this is.
Right, right, we know. Now we've arrived at the ADM portion of the document.
The appeal.
Appeal decision.
Correct.
Oh, my God.
Do you want that to find too?
Yeah.
Find it. Look at how many times I can find it.
Yeah, it's not a lot because it's only part of the appeal process.
A point, a decision maker for appeal. It's in the definition, it's in the paragraph that starts within three days of receipt of a lit, appeal on page twenty-five. The ADM.
But then it's repeated, it's eight, come up to eight times. ADM. What about, I know, this is crazy talk, but for the appeals process, the definition could just be at the outset of this section, for the purposes of this section, because we don't talk about it anywhere else.
Yeah, I would agree. It shouldn't be in the beginning of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Never remember what it was.
So put in a little verbiage about for the purpose of this.
Yeah, just as a definition.
Is it a subsection or just a section?
A section, for the purposes of this section, ADM means.
Not to be confused with IDM.
Right, ADM means the decision maker for appeal.
Does not mean the average daily membership, which is what it usually means in school districts' language.
All right.
It's like pow.
All right, and then we get into page twenty-six, informal resolution. I just capitalized where, eliminated, it precludes the parties and changed it to parties are precluded. I guess I must have had extra time on my hands. That's it. And then I updated the legal references. And when we're ready and it gets finally revised, I'll add the date.
Uh, in no, sorry, I'm reading the very final sentence. In no event need the district offer or facilitate an informal resolution process to resolve allegations that an employee sexually harassed a student.
That's the one.
That's that.
Yeah, that's the one exception that you can't do informal. You have to go through the formal grievance.
Oh, I see. I think it should just be it's correct written note. I, it looks like it's underneath the written notice and I got confused, but we're good.
It's just formatting.
Yep. Okay, great. Okay, so it looks like, um, we are back at the first page uh, where we had considered eliminating the second of the red paragraphs on page one. That was still a question mark. Uh, at this point, I'm fine with removing it. I think it's very clear where you can find the formal complaint and grievance procedure process. So we can go ahead and get rid of that, Karen.
Okay.
And, and that final sentence in the first red paragraph.
Great.
You are gonna come back to us with some massaged language. We're going to, in all cases, make this, the section numbers consistent with the numbering, which I will assist with.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna make the citations correct.
Change the words harasser and victim, remove those.
Yep, make sure that the words harasser and victim throughout are respondent and complainant. We're gonna modify the definition of consent to make clear that no student can ever give consent to a staff member. We are going to remove on page six of twenty-seven, the definitions for severe pervasive and objectively offensive. We are going to make consistent throughout the references to any policy shall be called board policy. We are okay with non-Titel IX sexual harassment staying as a subset of sexual harassment in the definitions section.
Decision maker.
Decision maker will be two words, no hyphen. Uh, on page eleven, uh, section eight, Karen is going to come back to us with new language around what it means to make a materially false statement in bad faith, just to be clear about what that sentence is really trying to say. On page twelve, uh, it looks like section Rome eleven, two B will be changed to all training materials. Um, we're gonna make sure that the, um, timeline will be twenty-four hours and not the end of the next school day when it comes to reporting requirements. We're gonna update the resource information for the outside resources for sexual harassment support. Uh, we are going to, because at this point in the document, we start underlining headings. We're gonna take those heads out.
We also need to cite on.
And we're gonna capitalize anytime we mention Title IX sexual harassment.
Right.
We need to capitalize that as a defined term.
Karen, did you say we're not underlining, right?
We're not.
We're not. It's just because it just all of a sudden starts happening.
Yep.
Why, why not? Just take it out.
Got it.
Um, I have something on page sixteen that just says KFA to add.
Yeah, massage, personal investigation will, uh, I think, is that the deliberate indifference? No, let's see.
No, no.
It was the, um.
Oh, the personnel investigation.
Yes, yes.
Even if we don't do a Title IX, we will pursue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just hadn't written that out.
Like, you know, had they left the district by the time they complained.
Correct, yes, yes. But the, let's say the staff.
I mean, we have language along those lines at the ends, but I think we should have it there too, but.
Because that might be where somebody goes to look.
Yep.
Um, I'm up to page nineteen. Um, we're gonna remove the quotes around disciplinary sanctions and remedial actions. We have established that we are going to define initial decision maker in the definitions section. Are we still feeling good about that?
We are.
Yeah.
I just think it says IDM everywhere.
Okay. And then, but, so the, the IDM will go in the full definitions section, but then in the appeals process, because that's the only time the ADM is mentioned, we'll just note it for the section.
Correct.
And that is all I have. Does anyone else have any comments? Questions, concerns, or anything else regarding Concord School Board Policy four fifteen, first draft?
Thanks, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Um, Speaker, I have a seven o'clock.
You have a seven o'clock, okay. I don't know. Why don't we take a quick two-minute recess, uh, because I'd love to grab some water and then we'll excuse Pam and then we'll keep going on crowdfunding, if everybody else is okay? Still going?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. We're in a two-minute recess. Thank you, everyone. We are back from recess. Uh, we are now going to look at Policy three zero four regarding crowdfunding. This is a new policy. I'm gonna turn it over to the district to explain, um, why we see this in front of us today.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna jump in. Um, this has really been an impact on us and it's, it's, it's really trying to, um, give us some guide rails around all of the funding sources that our staff can use to help fund special projects and things that are desirous for classroom settings. And so, um, we, and we appreciate, I mean, just last week, you had a donation of sixty-six hundred dollars for bicycles and helmets, right, out of Millbrook? But this is a little different because it often uses social media and other, um, uh, sites in which you can advertise your classroom needs. And, and we really just need guide reels because we don't know what, what's necessarily, what's being purchased. And it's important because if we're, let me give you an example. If we're gonna adopt a new reading program, you, you can't, you, you can't have staff going off and getting other things that don't, you know, aren't compliance and alliance aligned with it. And, you know, we've really tried to create some equity from building to building. So what happens at one building is the same, you know, across the district, especially with the elementary schools, right? So having something that gives us some guide rails will help us do that. I mean, Ellen and Jack often oversee some of these, 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 um, um, crowdfunding, um, efforts and we're, we're not, we're not clear about the money, how it's used. There are some companies that require specific information about our district that we do not release to, to a public entity. So we thought it was time, we, this is just a, a, a draft of, an, uh, other, we went out and looked at some other districts that have this to try to put together some idea to begin the discussion with you. We didn't, you know, propose that this is the, you know, the end-all, be-all for you, but to, to begin that discussion about it, so.
And what do you mean by Jack, um, and Ellen oversee some of these?
Well, you know, what, a lot of these funds will come through for us to manage. So let's say a, a, a member of the staff gets a, uh, some kind of a grant. Um, Ellen oversees that. She puts, she has, so we ma, can monitor and manage it. And again, we're making sure it's well-spent, it's well-documented. Same with Jack. He and Ellen work very closely when it comes to monitoring those.
So staff are allowed to apply to outside resource grants, applications? Do they have to go through the district to notify them?
Right, because we need to know that, we need to know that, that they've done that.
Because your name will be on the application.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, and again, it's our way to monitor the expenditures, making sure that they're, um, the, uh, the, the grants are utilized in the way that it was dedicated to be done. And so it's important for us.
I have a clarifying question. So when I look at this, what immediately comes to mind for me as a former educator and coach in the district is stuff. So you know what? In August, you go on any teacher's Facebook page and there's a link to Amazon and, and to these different programs where you can buy things for their classroom or make a, you know, and they list what they need, you know, markers or pencils, this kind of stuff. I know that in, with our Red Dot project, there was a big link to buy at the high school for all the, you know, the hygiene, feminine hygiene products and all. So you could, like, I bought a bunch because it's a way to donate. So I do think too, sometimes the, it, it's good to have a structure because those two things in my mind can blur. Like, I don't think about applying for a grant. The other piece is using Concord School District insignia when it's not necessarily a school district-sponsored thing, you know, like, like the, the thrift shop up at the high school, when they, they reach out a lot for donations and things, but it's not a school district-approved. It's the, it's the thrift store. So it's, there's a lot, there's a lot that comes in that can get all muddled and, I mean, you're a PTO, so you understand too. So is this more grants or is it anything?
It's anything.
Okay, because, because it's, it's the, it's so easy now to, you know, people do GoFundMes because they can't make their car payment. So, you know, asking people for money has become.
Right, and, and, you know, you always worry, um, if there aren't those guide rails in place, what happens when that money is coming in and not was it done? And you don't wanna put that kind of stress on anybody.
Booster clubs, those kinds of things, yeah.
So we're trying to, um, kind of clean it up a little bit and help staff understand what, how it works and how it can be done and utilized in a way that's productive for their classrooms. They've always done a list, you know, you, before we used, we didn't, it wasn't on social media.
Yeah, you send it home, yeah.
Piece of paper.
And you get eighty boxes of tissues and no crayons.
Right, 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 exactly. But, um, this is a little bit more than that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that, that's why we, um, we wanted to be able to.
And just a plug for PTOs, that many of the PTOs do have resources for the teachers to, for classroom purchases. So it's always important to reach out to the PTO if you're looking for classroom donations.
The nice thing is too, the money, I mean, I say it's not a huge amount of money, but it does limit the amount of, of decision-making as to how much money. Principals can approve up to five hundred. Anything above five hundred, up to twenty-five hundred, has to come to Kathleen. Anything above twenty-five hundred has to come to the board. And then there, they have to document after the fact how the money was used and benefited the kids. So there is some, there are some checks and balances.
But not if your own, if your own, if you are your own fiscal agent, like the PTO can receive grants.
You guys, but for crowdfunding, if it were somebody here coming through this policy. We still have to, you know, comply with our gift instruction, um, if there's any overlap there.
With our policy on gifts.
Yes.
Which we, which we do.
Well, and I would say, so I have, I have a few questions. Um, number one, to some of the points that are being made, the definition of crowdfunding here is the practice of using online sites to solicit donations. So we are excluding in-person donations.
Right.
You know, local businesses that might give the PTO a cut of that night, you know, like, so I just wanna make sure that you, that the, the intention was to.
Yeah, fundraising activity is different than crowdfunding.
Right, so this policy is specific to fundraising through online sites. So I'm saying this to.
Hit the Venmo button.
Right, because I feel like this is gonna generate some conversation. So I wanna be very specific about what we're discussing. And I'm also curious if you've passed this language through any teachers or administrators.
Not yet, not yet, no. We thought we would have a discussion with you first and, um, and see where you, where you were at. Because we knew it impacted so many areas, you know, with, we didn't want PTO, this to be, um, seen as a PTO to, to prevent that. Booster clubs is another big one, you know, for us.
Well, that's why I think when you go, include the ADs, include like, you know, Friends of Performing Arts, any, any part of our district that relies on fundraising.
Right, but we haven't talked to the teachers or the principals yet.
But it shouldn't matter. It's really targeting those who are not their own fiscal agent. Like, if a booster club is its own fiscal agent, they can do whatever they want for any crowd surfing or whatnot because it needs to come through them.
Right.
And it wouldn't be a Concord School District sanctioned fundraising. And it wouldn't be a Concord School District sanctioned fundraiser, it would be for that event.
And I do think that because we're kind of wading into new territory, that we're probably going to have to include in this what it is and what it is not. Because just like with the rental facility policy where we did our best, but it generated a lot of questions. So we just need to be, in my opinion, thorough about what this is and what this is not. And then, you know, in terms of dollar limits, you know, I first thought is looking at this, you know, we've got approval procedures, we have approval criteria, we have monetary limits. This is going to add labor for, for teachers who are looking for maybe even just a quick couple hundred dollars to, you know, boost their classroom wiggle seats or whatever.
Yeah, what if they thought, what if their goal was to raise five hundred and somebody made us two thousand dollar, would they have to close it down or would just...
Well, they would have to just get, reach out and follow the policy, which would mean come to me and just let me know.
I started this a little now and here, here we go.
Here's the other thing to think about though, too. We, we some, you know, we sometimes hear about, from, from people, I pay all this money, I pay all this ta, all these, these taxes and yet they're asking me for more donations. What, what, what is that about? So we always, we wanna be careful. And you do, you, you ask a lot of your community to fund public school. I get it, I understand it. And so you wanna make sure that these aren't things that we should be funding, right? But because somebody didn't order it or didn't, you know, there might be a reason for it. I don't know what that reason might be, but it does happen. I don't, I wanna be careful that the district doesn't look, you know, like we're not taking care of the needs of our kids in terms of their education. Something to think about.
Yeah.
And something for teachers to think about.
Right, and we sort of briefly touched on this, which is that we're not gonna bring up any individual person, school, you know, and in this discussion, we're just talking about generally.
Right.
But I will give, you know, a couple of examples in my own experience of a parent of an elementary school kid coming from a different district and assuming that we were going to have to supply the list of classroom supplies only to find out that this, they, each teacher has a budget for that classroom, which is amazing. You know, it comes through the district and so it was so nice as a parent to see the school funding the things that the teachers needed. That's great, that's great for PR. And then on the flip side, I have communications from a teacher who, who puts their Amazon wishlist in their signature. So each and every time they are communicating with somebody, they're, they're, they're making an ask and it doesn't feel discreet. It doesn't, you know, not discreet like, you know, under the radar, but just like a, a program that they need something for and then once it's fulfilled, it's fulfilled. It's sort of just this ongoing wishlist. So for me, that's sort of like two sides of the coin. Where we're like, okay, the district is providing and it's a great, it's a great impression on a parent. And then there's the flip side where I'm like, well, is this teacher just never getting what they need?
Or is this teacher just want a lot of stuff?
Does this teacher want a lot of stuff? So, you know, in terms of like, I agree with you, like how we communicate what we are asking for does matter. And I think that we'll have to cover that in this policy as well.
And that, that's why we wanted to start to talk about it, you know, again, I think these days everyone has budgets and money under the microscope and it's important that we, you know, and, and you, and the board's been very clear, right? It's about equity. You, you can't expect one parent to be able to go down and buy all these nice things to start school. Not everybody's in that same position. So the district has always been very careful about making sure that all kids get the basic supply, right? They can be functional. Now, yeah, we might ask for extra boxes of Kleenex or maybe some whatever, hand solutions or wipes or whatever, but but even then we're being careful, as you know. Matt, Matt's very careful about what comes into our district via, you know, product. Again, it's just kind of tightening it up a little bit.
And, you know, we have the added issue of scams, you know, like everything looks a little suspicious lately, even when things are legitimate. It's become common practice to second guess. So maybe this actually provides, you know, parents and teachers reassurances that something is a legitimate fundraiser because they can check a list of approved sites or they can, you know, check with the district, I don't, depending on how this lands, but, yeah, I think it's all good.
I wonder too, could you potentially, if you're worried about too much, limit the amount per year? Not the amount, but the number of requests? In other words?
Yeah, that's overwhelming with the signature.
Yeah.
Right, and I, and I don't fault that person. That person probably said it and forget it. You know, like they probably were like, oh, that's the beginning of the year, maybe this'll, you know, boost my, you know, classroom supplies and then just forgot that it was there for the rest of the year. So, you know, that's another point, is cleaning that up.
Yeah.
You know, I, I heard a story of another teacher who had set a project on one of the teacher, like the classroom funding sites and then like a full year later, it randomly got funded. You know, did that teacher even need those materials at that point?
Right.
But they, you know, sort of set it up and let it go and, you know, so there's, there are many considerations around crowdfunding. So I'm so glad that it's coming to the table. I'm very interested in feedback from teachers and administrators before we even get into the conversation.
What we wanted this conversation first, before we jumped into, you know, all of a sudden we tell the teachers, well, we're gonna do something about this crowdfunding. And I, you know, and I think it just gives us the protocols that we need to have in place. And, and I always say, things like this is not just about setting up rules and regulations, but it also protects them. You know, part of the job of the policies that you write, we just finished that four fourteen. It isn't just about the complainant. It's about, it's protecting everyone. So I, I always, I feel like this protects them too.
Well, and knowing that there's a policy in place that's gonna make staff members that might look into crowdfunding be more careful because they will, how, what do I have to follow?
Okay, what side am I using? And if somebody contributes and when they put their information in, does that company then take that information and use it in another way? You know, there's all that kind of, that we've, we've certainly become accustomed to, right? So we wanna make sure that we're protecting those people who make those kinds of donations.
I agree with that. And then I also, you know, again, this is placing obstacles to teachers potentially just going out and getting what they need because they didn't get it from us in the first place, right? And they're gonna be like, great, now I have to get it approved, it's gotta be from a site I can't, I don't wanna use, and now I have to...
Put a report into the superintendent.
I have to report to the superintendent how my donations were used and how the students sent them.
Maybe we don't, maybe we can calm that down a little bit. Maybe we can, you know, people have used the superintendent, maybe it's a principal's thing. They just work with their principal in terms of doing it. But we got it, I have, I feel very...
No, there needs to be some oversight.
Right, to the principals. We need to support them. I, I'm not against this. I, I think it's wonderful that people have an opportunity to get more things for the kids.
Year after year, as our new teachers come in, they're much more technically savvy than we are, you know, so, and everything changes in a blink of an eye. So, you know, in five years, it could be a whole different host of issues and this keeps, keeps everything like that.
And I think, actually, to bring up something you and I had talked about before, which is the opportunity to keep it local.
Right.
Right? There's this default to Amazon for a book that you could maybe get at this, basically the same price at Gibson's. So there's an opportunity here to support local by having a policy in place that directs people to local vendors that helps them remember that Amazon may feel convenient in the moment, but oftentimes there's an upcharge and it's not cheaper than...
It's a great example.
Millions of invisible dollars go away.
You can do just as well downtown at Gibson's. So...
All right, well, thank you for bringing this forward. Does anybody have any more comments or questions on the policy itself? Do you guys wanna walk through it?
Yeah, we could walk through it. It's pretty, pretty simple, you know, the purpose, there's a purpose statement on it, you know, just to tell you why we, you know, what, what was the point of even bringing this up? And like you say, Ed, I don't wanna add another barrier to the teachers, but it, it reviews that. So take a peek at that, maybe mark it up in any way. So the, the second part is really kinda, and it starts out negative. I, I'm not sure I like the, where it falls into the policy, but it's unapproved crowdfunding, so it kind of gives you an idea of what can, what you have to do to be approved.
So maybe process for crowdfunding approval sounds better than unapproved.
Yeah, than unapproved.
It's prohibited.
Yeah, so I, I, I mean, I might wanna, we might wanna word that up a little bit. And then just also, to, to, people have to understand, there's no compelling reason for you to do this. You don't have to, you don't have to donate, you don't have to do anything. Either parents or students or other teachers don't have to feel like they have to contribute, you know, so your name is on some list. So I think we wanna make that clear. And then the, basically, we just asked for, we asked for five or six statements here on how to get the request and what you need to do that, and you request. What, what kinds of information do you need? Your name, what, what site you'd be using? What, what is it you're doing? That's all. What, what do you wanna do? And when it begins and when it ends. So there was a beginning and an end to it, rather than have it just running, a running one. And, you know, we'll probably have a form, you know, we won't, we'll create a form for it so that they don't have to create their own.
This is a good conversation starter and then a good policy will come out of the conversation.
And that's kind of what we wanted to do today. And then we wanted a list of all the approved sites. What would approve? What do we know works and is legit and has good results? So we, we would wanna give the teachers a list of sites that, that we think would be, that would be appropriate. And then the process for the gifts and accepting it in looking, working, really, they should work with their superintendent. But it's all, we did it by amount of money. I think we put it in there, didn't we Karen? Yeah, five hundred dollars under the principal. And if it got higher than that, it went to the superintendent at twenty-five hundred. And I don't really know, Jack might know what, and Ellen may know what the, the num, the limits are, how much money is really, you know, like you said Karen, it might be just a couple hundred dollars for one particular thing.
Is this a campaign that seeks dollars or does this, this includes dollar amount means items?
It could be both. It could be item, items or, or, or dollars.
Well, I, I just look at some of the, like, I know, the thrift shop does a lot of this. They, you have, there's a site and you click on what you're willing to either buy or you can make a monetary, monetary donation and they'll use the money to purchase on their own. So, you know, sometimes, you know, people donate items and you have, you know, fifty boxes of, you know, you know, pads that no one's using and no tampons left. So the, the Red Dot Project can take the, the money and go buy what they need. So some of these are both. It's a, you can purchase an actual item or you can donate money for the organization to purchase, purchase the item. So... That's, that's crowdfunding. And, and it's not, it's not consist, they, they set it up and then it ends. You know, when they get what they need, they take it down. So I, like, in looking at this policy, they already follow it. But she doesn't have to let you know, well, I bought thirty-six boxes of tampons last month. You know what I mean? Like, you know, like, that's where I can see where, like, do I have to keep track of all this, you know? Which they probably do to a certain extent anyway. Yeah. So a lot of this just puts in place so when someone who comes into the district, I think, can, they're starting.
Just so they know. So, and you know, we might think about five hundred dollars doesn't go very far anymore, does it?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So maybe that number is too low, you know, so I wanna, I wanna get some numbers from Jack before we, before we finalize this. Think it was twenty-five hundred dollars here. But don't forget now, anything over that money would come to the board and you often, as you know, approve donations. And you have a responsibility that if anything over a threshold, a certain threshold, this one says twenty thousand. I wanna double-check our policy, but you have to have a hearing on an acceptance, you have to have a hearing when it goes over a certain amount.
Cause I produce twenty thousand dollar donation. I, I, the Molly B Foundation, it put twenty thousand into the new sound equipment at the theater. And it came before, we had to vote on it.
Right.
We had to talk about it.
So you have a, you actually open it up and there's a hearing. People get a chance to respond. You talk about what the project is.
Yeah, click, close, came.
With anything over twenty thousand. So there is a process. Now, we haven't had anything like that, that, that kind of amount of money. The next section just laid out and again, the, the, all of the criteria for approval. I think I mentioned a couple of things, you know, it had to be in line with the district curriculum. That there's not disparities between students and schools. Again, that's important, right? In our district, it's, as we go from place to place. Again, a beginning and an end date. No comparisons between buildings. We have to be careful about when you post information. This is really important. When you post information, that you don't put information that would, would violate confidentiality, FERPA information, student's name, age, address, that kind of thing. That's, I forget which number that is, but...
Five eighty?
Yeah, on page four, number nine. Pictures are another area that you have to be careful of, so... At thirteen, we're gonna have to talk to the wellness committee. Does not request food or beverage items inconsistent with the district policy. So we can't ask for five dozen cupcakes because there's somebody's birthday.
I'm gonna be in so much trouble, you guys.
I know, I know. That's still, it's interesting discussion we always have. And we're gonna come to you with that policy.
Yeah, that's challenging.
Yeah.
Cause there's no list of foods that are acceptable or not acceptable. It's using foods in celebration. But, okay, all right, I have other things.
Probably, you know, some making donations of money to purchase a pizza party or something maybe, or something like that. But again, I think that would be more monetary.
Right, but then there was that caveat that we've been discussing in the wellness, that if families bring in the food, that's what we're discouraging, like birthday celebrations, right? But if the staff, if the teacher has a planned day that incorporates some educational component and they are the ones purchasing it, that was considered to be okay.
Right, like maybe they're having a pizza party because they're learning about Italy. So the teacher's looking for donations for a pizza party to celebrate Italian history or something.
But then, then it, this gets really shady because then there's the movie day, asking for donations for liter sodas and other chips and whatnot, right? Then that's starting to get...
What happened to popcorn?
What did you say? Popcorn and water?
I'm, I'm not, I definitely don't disagree. This gets to be very challenging.
Yes, I know. I, I've been on wellness committees, it's tricky.
So, so the last piece of it really is, has to do with more about how we regulate the money. That's the other part. And all monetary donations made payable to and deposited into account designated by the SAU Business Office so that we know where it is and, again, it's...
As a district that had the lunch lady, Bezzle, half a million dollars, a bunch of years back, this is a good thing to keep track of.
And remember, when donations are made, when, when, when the PTA builds a playground equipment and puts in a new swing, they don't own that anymore. That's yours. So that, anything like that becomes the school district property. So if, if, if a teacher says, I wanna have, wanna buy five, or I wanna buy ten sets of ear pods, like, I mean, we have those. Let me use that as an example. That becomes our property. Who's gonna track that? I understand that, but it, it, it isn't...
I also understand too.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, which brings me to my other question about tracking activity. So if I'm a teacher and I just don't wanna do this process and I put something up on givememoney.com slash scammers alert, and what are, what are the ramifications?
Professional expectations, four thirty-one.
Karen was ready. So I feel like we should have that cited in this policy.
Conform with district policies, yeah.
What matters of personnel will come up if there's inconsistent adherence. You know, there's, there's definitely gonna be a difference between a teacher who does their best and just misses the mark and somebody who's like, no, I'm just gonna put something up on Amazon because it's my personal Amazon wishlist. It's my wishlist. It's none of your business.
Or not, or who gives a letter home that says, please send in donations, then there's no way it could be tracked.
So, yeah, there's, there's a lot to think about.
Yeah, there is a lot to think about. And again, we're not trying to handcuff people to do the work that they want. Yeah, there is a lot to think about, and, um, again, we're not trying to, to handcuff people to do the work that they wanna do with children, that's the last thing we wanna do, right? But, but we also just wanna be able to handle it and control it in this day and age, and people expect it of us.
Yep, I agree.
The staff could send a letter home saying, this is what I'm looking for, you can access it on these websites like Amazon, but then, that wouldn't, that would be okay. I would say that circumvents this policy, cause this is about crowdfunding for online.
And they're not doing it directly like that, right?
If you send me a list, then I could get, then I could buy it and send it with my child, and then it doesn't...
The, I mean, there's no question about it, I mean, there's ways around everything, right? But I think at least it would help us to, to begin to bring this, I think we have some work to do on this, a lot of work to do on this, but, um... And, uh, Ellen and Jack had a first run-through with it, so I, I need, I need to get back to them, too, along with the teachers.
I think it's a great start.
I'll bring these to the principals first.
The only way we can have a conversation about it is to generate something, and say, what do you think? You know, I don't think it's a bad thing at all to have a potentially tense conversation around money. It just is a tough thing to talk about, and so, you know, I, I think I anticipate...
He comes up now with, he comes up with boosters, that's where we worry the most, and who's running the booster clubs, right? You know, um, when, when a, when a teacher's running the booster clubs, and that happens, you know, 'cause they're just like, they're moms and dads, right? Their kids are in a sport, and they're gonna support them, right? You know, and now they've got, you know, all this money is flowing through with events, and, you know, and now, all of a sudden, they're responsible for it, and we need to make sure that they're supported and, you know, protected. I do worry about them.
Have you thought about, about Venmo and how that may apply here?
Well, people are starting to use Venmo now, they're using it a lot.
Cheddar up, well, cheddar up the same thing, any of those.
Yeah, so, we're gonna have to address, um, the, how the payments are made, 'cause then you don't see anything.
But to be clear...
You know, there's no logos, there's, you know, so...
We can circumvent, someone could just circumvent this whole thing, and be more fiscally responsible themselves to become a five oh one C three. Any of the booster clubs could become a five oh one C three.
We used to have to, all the booster clubs are five oh one C three.
So then, that, then that really shouldn't matter, because they have to report that out, just like a P T O.
Yeah, I think this is more...
Yeah, we've actually found some that had, had not done that, so we...
Yes, I think that would be the, that's, they, they need to secure themselves, or you're concerned about having a Concord School District logo anywhere associated with someone who's accepting money?
Right.
So they shouldn't be u, I mean, I, I look at that, they shouldn't be using...
They should probably, they should not be using our branding.
Correct.
When they do that kind of work.
And that, yeah, exactly, that's how I see it, if, if, if someone want, if, if a, if a booster club, I'm just using that as an example, wants to not be a five oh one C three, and they wanna get mixed up with people's money coming in, and I don't have any way of tracking that, and then someone wants to sue me, that's on them. But we're concerned about having the Concord School District associated with them in any way. So then, I, I somehow see that as a little different, not managing their, like, this doesn't apply to a five oh one C three.
No. This is, this is your classroom teacher that's just reaching out and seeking, you know, donations, whether they're actual items, or whether it's money.
Right, or any staff member who has a...
Right, it's not the...
A club, or is looking donations for clubs, okay.
Are boosters always sports related?
Primarily.
Well, I think the music department has a big...
Friends of Performing Arts. Music also has booster, okay.
I don't think they call it a booster club, but, yeah.
Same, it's the same framework, yeah.
Yeah, same, same concept.
All right, I'll think about that.
Well, so would be the robotics, too.
Robotics, I don't...
They have Concord, Concord Robotics supports them.
Molly B's supported that for a few years.
And there are their own five oh one C three.
Yes.
Robotics, yeah.
It's under Concord Robotics, my understanding is Concord Robotics supports the robotics teams.
All good things to think about for when we get feedback, and this comes back to us.
Yeah, we'll come back and come back to you with some more and clean it up.
Workshop it, yeah.
Yeah, I do, I think this is the kind of policy that we need to do that, 'cause it affects across the board.
Great, thank you for bringing it forward, thank you for drafting the language.
So, I have you scheduled for June eleventh for your next meeting. Is there anything in particular, uh, I know we're gonna bring back four fifteen. Um, I don't know where we'll be with this, but I'll get back to you on the crowdfunding. Um, is there anything else that you want to bring, I mean, we're kind of in, waiting in anticipation of what's gonna happen down at the legislative, um, office.
I think it's, given how thick four fifteen is, I, why not give us a shorter meeting?
Okay.
For once.
All right.
Why don't we just have that...
And it's a busy time, anyway, that week is graduation week, I don't, there's stuff, there's things going on, the Wall of Fame is gonna have an evening, um, we have a lot of things going on. And you know, I like to get to some of those things.
Yes, um, I will put it out to committee members, though, are, are there any, um, policies that you've been thinking about, have questions about, that you would like to generate a discussion? Even, even not now, I would just send it over...
Can I just think about that?
Yeah, I would say, think about it.
I, I am gonna bring back the wellness, 'cause the, the wellness committee has asked me to look at, um, a policy, um, some change in policy, so, I have it, but I just haven't...
That's fine, that's good for it to be on the list, because we also know that the facility rental might come back to us.
Yeah, we've been working with that, yeah, might come back to us, um, I worked with athletic director, and, and certainly, um, Matt, and, um, what's her name, the high school?
Glenna.
Glenna, thank you, um, Glenna, who does a lot of that, so, we, we need to, we need to take a peek at that again, too.
All right, um, well, those don't have to go on the agenda, but if for any reason they come up, and you're ready to have us look at it, we can always add it to the agenda, and if we get to it, we get to it. And then, I would say, probably June or July, we'll just start reviewing what the legislature has...
Has dictated.
Produced, and, uh, you know, kinda make a plan for the upcoming year.
Um, and Superintendent, I know you had July ninth as a July meeting date, I can't make that meeting.
Yeah, I, I, we're looking at everybody's vacation schedules, so, we have an executive committee, so we'll kind of, I, I know that, that was kind of a roughed, rough his July. And, uh, you don't even, I haven't even filled anything in yet, so...
Tentative.
Yeah. I mean, uh, we, we try to give some people some time, too, just, you know, people go away on vacation and stuff, so... And, uh, Karen doesn't work in the, in the summer?
Right. Good, good for you, girl.
Yeah.
All right, uh, well, with that, unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
It is seven thirty-four, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, that's great.